Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Prawley.
Yes.
Five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item four B, the applicant has requested approval and acceptance of pages one through forty of the Historic West Des Moines Design Guidelines, pertaining to the Valley Junction Mixed Use District for the area generally located between Fourth Street to Sixth Street and Railroad Avenue to Locust Street. I would ask staff to please come to the microphone and explain this request.
Thank you, Brad Munford with, sorry, Brad Munford Business Development Coordinator with Economic Development Department. Today, what we are presenting to you, I'm here also with, virtually joining us today, we have Mike Hoffman with Tesco and Associates, and also, I believe, Aaron Siciliano, also with Tesco and Associates, they're the consultants that's been helping us through this process. What I'd like to do is just kind of briefly go over some of the reasons why we're here, and then we'll go ahead and let the consultant, Mike, take it from there. So generally, what's happening is that we have, today, we're looking at pages one through forty of the Historic West Des Moines Design Guidelines. They deal specifically with a new district that we are calling the Valley Junction Mixed Use District. That area is approximately between Fourth and Sixth Street and from Railroad to Locust Street. Excuse me. We'll be coming back at a later time for two other sections that have to deal with two other classifications that we're still working with the Steering Committee. The original master plan for this, or the current master plan, was approved back in 2016. We have had some success in new development occurring in the area. Individuals from the community, or some community members, have had concerns about this, and the City Council decided that it was a good idea to take another look at the master plan, and we're moving forward with that. Couple other dates, on June first, we had a public, a public meeting with the community to kind of review our existing master plan, and to kind of go over what's working well, and what are things we need to be worked on. We took those things and added it to the scope of work that Tesco is working on today. Take a moment to talk about Steering Committee that was created. Under the Mayor's direction, we created a Steering Committee that was made up of existing 501(c)(3) nonprofits. There's a total of nineteen members, and they equally represent the residential and business community. That Steering Committee has been meeting fairly frequently to discuss these issues, and from their work, along with the input from the community and the groups they represent, we are bringing this forward to you today. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and let Mike and Aaron start the presentation. Thank you.
All right, this is Mike Hoffman, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mike, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. Go ahead to the next slide, please. So, we did the master plan for this area five or six years ago, and really enjoyed doing it, and we're very happy to be back again. I just wanted to highlight the fact that while we're focusing on a specific area, the traditional business district, if you will, of Valley Junction, our study area is really much broader than that, it goes all the way up to Grand Avenue, and includes the area that you see kind of in whatever that color is, but, Louis, Greenie, whatever, there. But, so we are looking at both the business district and the surrounding neighborhood, and paying a lot of attention to the transition and how those areas work in conjunction with each other. Next slide. So the timeline for the project, actually, we started back in September. We'll be going through probably almost the end of this year, by the time it's really ready for approval. We started out kind of doing some groundwork, what are the issues today, and what's happened in the area, and what's happened since. We did the overall master plan. We're right in mid-swing of the Vision and Design Guideline portion of the project, that's phase two that you see there. As Brad mentioned, we decided to split up the design guidelines into a couple of pieces to accelerate the guidelines for the Historic Business District, because we know that there's some development pressure there, we want to keep things moving in that area because of the moratorium, and then looking at some of the transitional areas, the areas along Railroad Avenue, and other components of the area for guidelines coming up in the near future that we'll put into Phase Three. Also on Phase Three, we're looking at different opportunity sites in the area, what are some of the investment opportunities, digging deeper into the zoning, that'll be a big part of Phase Three, and what the final zoning product should look like, and then developing a priorities and action plan for you in the last phase of the project. Next slide. We are really trying to do our best to reach out to the community, and we're doing that in a lot of ways. We met with three different resident associations, this is a picture from one of the association meetings, to get their input and ideas, and it's been really helpful to hear their perspectives on things. We also met one-on-one and in small groups with eighteen or twenty different people in the community to understand what some of the issues were, so that we could get a good grounding on what's happening now in this area, and what are some of the concerns. Next slide. We also had a meeting with the business community. So in addition to interviewing a number of business people one-on-one, we also had a merchant breakfast on November seventeenth. That was a great session, because we had our friend Jason, who you see right in the middle there, talking, he's from an organization called Small Nation, it's based in Ohio, that has done some really incredible work in terms of redeveloping older historic downtowns, and so he was able to provide some additional insights. And we also were able to get additional input from the business owners that were there. Next. So here's just some of the quotes that we got from the session discussing with the businesses, but, you know, there are some underutilized spaces, particularly upper stories, that we are working on ways to improve of those issues, and that will be part of the overall study. Not really a focus of the Design Guideline phase, but certainly will be a focus of later elements of this master planning process. Next. This is kind of a mind map that we did, I think, right at that merchant breakfast meeting, where we were just kind of summarizing some of the issues that we discussed at the meeting, talking about what elements are currently missing in the area, whether it's an ice cream shop, or a bookstore, or florist, talking about why this area is successful, talking about ways that it can continue to evolve over time and still be successful, talking about the need to get a community input, and people to participate in committees, and those kind of issues. Next. We also planned a couple of neighborhood workshops. We had one on November seventeenth. Again, that was my friend Jason from Small Nation, talking about some of the wonderful things that they've done in their community, and actually, one of the things he really did talk about was some of the upper story utilization. So that was very helpful for people, and I think both the community and the Steering Committee enjoyed hearing some of his comments. Next. This is one of the quotes from that session, talking about how they were able to preserve the history of that community, and some of those things that would be applicable to our work here in Historic West Des Moines. Next. We also had planned a wonderful, awesome workshop on December fifteenth, and then you guys got wins that you've never seen before, or close to it, and we had to cancel that particular meeting. So we went virtual with it, we created a virtual workshop, and we had a visual preference survey, which we got a lot of input in a very short time. I was really impressed by how many people are passionate and concerned about this area. We had well over three hundred responses to that preference survey. And what the preference survey is, is essentially looking at a bunch of images to talk about what is appropriate in this area, and what is not appropriate in this area. Next. This kind of shows you the profile of people that responded to that survey, that it was a really good mix of people that work in the area, people that live in the area, people that maybe in the past have lived in the area, or are really close to Historic West Des Moines, property owners, and almost everybody visits the area and shops in the area. So a really good mix of people, so it wasn't outsiders necessarily, but it was a mix of people that just visit the area, and the people that live and work in the area on a regular basis. So we're really happy with the mix of responses that we got from the survey. Next. Next. These are just some of the slides from the survey, and what we were able to do was able to ask people to rate these images on whether they thought that this image was very appropriate for this mixed-use area that we're talking about tonight, or very inappropriate. So I just kind of wanted to show you how the scale worked, and how we kind of interpreted some of the things that we were seeing. So this image shows kind of a stepped building pattern, going from one story to two-story to three-story. People generally liked that idea and concept, and we worked that kind of solution into the design guidelines that we were reviewing this evening. Next. We also were rating these images based upon a number of factors, right? We looked at the architecture of the buildings themselves, looked at the building materials, and then we were looking at the scale and the height of the structures. This particular image rated very well on all three of those categories, as you can see here. Then some of the things that kind of came out of that, that came out of the discussions. So people were also able to enter comments on each of these slides, which was really helpful for us to understand what do they really like about these images, right? And some of the things we were seeing in this particular case was the proportion with rhythm of windows, the detailing, you see the turret there, and those kind of elements people really enjoyed, thought were really appropriate, and things that we should incorporate into our design guidelines. Next. This is an image of some newer construction, not here, actually, it's a town called Frankfort, Illinois, but it was newer, two-story commercial construction that was fitting into the historic area. And everybody that, well, not everybody, but most people that rated this image rated it very high and very appropriate in terms of both the architecture, the brick building materials that were used here, and the scale and the height of this particular structure. So again, people perceived this fitting into the area, and if somewhere to build on a new lot in the commercial district, this kind of construction would be appreciated and deemed appropriate, I guess, based upon the ratings from the visual preference survey. Next. We also wanted to have images in here of things that people didn't like, and they didn't like this image. That they, this didn't have the kind of traditional rhythm of windows and patterns that you see now. There's some parts of the walls that is plain plank here. The banding were things that people identified is not desirable. The overall scale and height ranked a little bit better, but in terms of building materials and architecture, people weren't particularly enthralled with this image. Next. Nor were they very happy about this image. If you've been to the area, obviously, you recognize this building, it's one of the newer buildings in the Valley Junction area. And I think people were reacting primarily to the Corten Steel portion of this building, let's just call it what it is, right? You know, it doesn't really have any windows, it's fairly stark and contrasts a little bit with the architecture of the rest of the building and the rest of the area. You don't have the step-down in height like we were talking about earlier in the images. And so this was an image that we don't want to duplicate in the future, I guess. Next. These are just some of the examples of the comments that were provided, I think we had over six comments, they were really great. Obviously, they don't all agree with each other, but if we look at the composite of those, we were really able to get a good feel for what people wanted to see in this area, and it was very, very helpful. So if any of the members of the Commission participated in that, and I'm sure Scott did, because he's on our committee, but if other members, they say, "Thank you for your comments, it was really appreciated." We got a lot of great input, and we really are trying to build the guidelines that you see tonight based upon the feedback that we got from this preference survey. Next. So now let's get into the design guidelines. As Brad mentioned earlier, we have developed guidelines for a number of different areas, including areas along Railroad, and perhaps some transitional areas between the main commercial district and the surrounding neighborhood. But right now, we are just going to focus on the guidelines that would be this mixed-use area, which is essentially the area that's currently zoned Historic Valley Junction Business. Next. We actually started out with the process of developing these guidelines a little bit later. And then we're challenged by the City Council. When we got that request, we came up with this timeline, you can see here, where we had that, well, the virtual workshop on the fifteenth of December, did the visual preference survey, met with the Steering Committee several times throughout that process. The first one on five, well, we had meetings before that, but in terms of the Design Guideline process, we met with them on the fifth and sixth of January, we were going to talk about the results of that visual preference survey. We had a meeting on January twenty-sixth, and another one on February second to discuss the draft Design Guidelines, make some modifications and improvements to those. We are here before you tonight to get your thoughts on the draft guidelines for the first forty pages of the document, and then the plan is to take that to City Council on February twenty-first, and meet our deadline of March first. We have a document and some design guidelines in place to hopefully be able to remove that moratorium and let things proceed in that core business district. Next. Next. So first forty pages, oh, there's an introduction here that just kind of explains what the Design Guidelines are about, and how they're going to be used. The next section talks about how these documents will be used. And then we are focused on Chapter One, which is Mixed Use Commercial Area, which again, is kind of the Historic Business District of Valley Junction. Next. You know, this is a really wonderful area. It's unique in many, many ways, it's eclectic, and we wanted guidelines that reflect that. We wanted a tool that would be easy for anybody to use, it would be easy for the residents to understand what we envision in this area, it will be easy for the development community to understand what the community is looking for. We really hope by putting these guidelines out there, that developers coming in will know how to tweak their designs and modify their designs to fit this particular and unique area of West Des Moines. We did want to highlight the fact that it's going to be very important to apply these guidelines consistently. If you apply it to one project and not the next, then you're going to run into some problems, and it's not going to work very well from there, I can just tell you upfront from experience, that's kind of how it's going to play out. But if we consistently apply these guidelines, and they are guidelines, right? You can vary from it a little bit, but, you know, I think they provide a good direction for anybody coming in looking to either build a new building or modify an existing building, and these would really apply to both of those situations. We had a question come up from the committee, you know, "Do I need to modify my existing building to fit this?" No, you don't. This isn't requiring any changes to an existing building. What this is saying, what these guidelines are suggesting is, if you are going to go ahead and do a facade renovation of your building, or you've got a vacant lot and you're going to do some new construction, then these are the parameters we would like you to strongly consider in the design of your building. Next. This is just kind of summarizing some of the community input that we had, I think I've highlighted most of this for you already, but we really, really have tried to build this document from the community. We've gotten some great input. I don't know if any of you watched, or heard, or participated in some of this during committee meetings. Sometimes it may get a little heated, but it's really, I think, only because everybody is really passionate and really loves this area of the community. So it's been exciting to see that enthusiasm, and a challenge to kind of pull those various ideas together, but I think we're moving in a good direction, and obviously, we'll learn from you tonight, whether you feel that way or not. Next. This just kind of talks about the fact that it's going to be important to reference these guidelines in your city codes and documents. We actually probably will be proposing some additional modifications to zoning ordinance to implement some of the strategies we have to, we'd like to see happen in this area. We're not quite ready to get into those zoning issues yet. But suffice it to say that guidelines alone don't work. If you don't tie it to the code, if you don't require a view that requires Design Guidelines, then they're really going to be kind of meaningless to you. So the two have to work closely, hand in hand, together to function well, and to be, to achieve the objectives that we have for this area. Next. So this just shows you kind of an overall checklist of what we would encourage people that want to do the project in this area, whether it's redevelopment, or just a facade enhancement, is to come talk to staff, right? We'll have a pre-application conference with them, provide the guidelines, and kind of take it through the process, and you see diagrammed out there. But that communication is really going to be critical. You've got a great staff that understands design issues and design character. You can see it really throughout the community and the quality of architecture that you've got in West Des Moines. We want to continue that character, but this tool will hopefully give staff some ability to direct some of the development in this area in a way that is consistent with the vision and desires of the neighborhood. Next. So when we were looking at the guidelines, we looked at two different kind of categories, the architecture of buildings, and then everything else. So the site, streetscape design, those kind of components, we kind of viewed those as very closely related elements, but we just kind of use that two-pronged structure to guide development of the overall document. Next. We also wanted to make sure that, again, to make this an easy-to-use document, we wanted to have a glossary in there that kind of defines some of the terms that we might know, if you're familiar with architecture or planning, but the standard resident may not know, and just to understand how those terms are being used in the document. So we provided this kind of visual glossary of terms to help people understand what we were talking about. Next. Next. This area also obviously has a very, very rich history. In fact, part of the area that you see here is in a National Register Historic District. There are fifty-three contributing structures in that particular district. These guidelines will apply to any redevelopment or renovation of those buildings if the developer of that property or the property owner wants to pursue historic tax credits. There's another layer of things that they will need to look at, those are in this document as well. But it was very important to recognize that, we've actually had a lot of discussions about this particular historic district, and the potential to even look at different, more local versions of the historic district in the future, and those are ongoing conversations with the Steering Committee. Actually, we'll be talking about that at Wednesday night's meeting. But for now, we have certainly just recognized the existing approved historic district in this area, and how that relates to the guidelines in this document. Next. Here you can see that, I'm sure you can't read them on the screen, but it's in the document, the Secretary of Interior Design Standards, that would also be applicable to any of those fifty-three contributing structures that are in that National Register District, if they wanted to pursue any type of tax credits, which is a major incentive to do, to rehab buildings in this area. Next. And these are just some of the different tax credit opportunities that are out there, both federal and locally, both from the state of Iowa and from Polk County. Our historic preservation expert that we have on our team, Ed Torres, really was impressed by your local exemption, Polk County property tax exemption provisions. That was a really a unique and nice perk. It is available locally if someone wants to really rehab a building with these tax credits. Next. So let's get into the districts. Next. All right, this map shows you kind of the overall districts that we were talking about. We are really only talking about the area that you see in red there. That's the area that is currently zoned Valley Junction Historic Business. Actually, that Historic Business District goes all the way up to Vine right now, in the five-hundred block there, Fifth. We're suggesting that taking that out of the Design Guidelines, and all the conversations with neighbors and businesses, and really everybody that we talked to, the general consensus was that the far north end didn't want to continue to be predominantly commercial. Some commercial uses, absolutely, but more of a residential character, which it has today. So these Design Guidelines that we're reviewing tonight do not extend to the five-hundred block, but it does include everything else that is currently zoned Valley Junction Historic Business. The other, the transitional areas, the Railroad District, the mixed industrial area, put those on hold, if you will, we're working through that with the Steering Committee. Those boundaries and those lines will change almost assuredly in the future, but we are focused really on that Valley Junction Mixed Use Area tonight. Next. Next. So this is the section on Architecture Elements of Mixed Use Commercial. We have a diagram there that kind of illustrates some of the architectural elements that we're talking about regarding parapets, and upper stories, and detailing, and cornices, and all those terms that are really important to understand from an architectural guideline perspective, but maybe, or may or may not be in your everyday vocabulary. Next. I'm not going to take you through every page of the document, you've got it in your hand, you can look at it, but I did want to kind of highlight a couple of things to you that we tried to do here. We tried to provide both good examples and bad examples, most of which are straight out of the visual preference survey we did, to show people not only the look and the feel and the character that we're trying to get in this area in terms of scale and character, and where buildings are placed on lots, and those kind of elements, but then also show you what we definitely don't want to see happen in this area. So we definitely don't want buildings set way back from the street. Parking lots in front of, we do want buildings pretty close to that front property line of the sidewalk. And we do want buildings that relate to each other in terms of height, scale, character, consistency of awnings, signage, all those kind of elements. Next. This is looking at the scale of buildings and the height of buildings. We had a lot of conversation with the Steering Committee on building height. The consensus coming out of that process was essentially, you know, if you've got a two-story on both sides of you, a three-story is acceptable. If you've got only single stories on each side of you, two-story is acceptable. So you really can only step up one story, still keeping the height cap where it is today at three stories, or I think it is thirty-six feet, if I remember, from the code. So not increasing the overall height, but honestly, limiting the places where you could even do that height, depending on what structures are next to you when you're ready to build some. Next. This is a plan-view diagram, trying to illustrate the same things in different scenarios that could come up. The important thing here is that if you look along Fifth, you've got some areas where you've got large parking areas that are owned by the city back there. In that case, you've got good separation between homes. So if you see on the left of the diagram there, you might be in a situation where you could go up a little bit higher in some situations, whereas on the right-hand side there, you've got an alley that's the only thing separating your structure from, say, on Fifth to the adjacent, right behind it in the alley there. And we also had a conversation about one-and-a-half stories, and how we're going to treat those. Essentially, the conversation ended with saying, "We're going to treat that one-and-a-half story just like a one-story," in terms of height and how that relates. So again, there certainly are a few places where you go up to three stories in this area still, but much less than there are, there have been, under the previous regulations. Everything will be stepped and scaled so that you get some good compatibility between structures moving forward. Next. These are just some visuals of some of the liked and disliked images, you actually saw several of these. So next. And then we got into the site and streetscape elements, which was also interesting to see what people would desire in those areas. I know the city has done some streetscape work in the area in the past, but this provides some vision of what could happen in the future. And so I think it will be helpful to, moving forward as well, is give developers an idea of what you would like to see further building, if they're redeveloping something. So next. So we looked at the pattern of the sidewalk in the area, how that works, wanting to obviously make sure that we have a clear pedestrian zone, designation of where people could put small chalkboard signs or what have you promoting a particular business and those kind of things. So these illustrations and photographs, I think, help depict that. Next. Again, more kind of positive images and negative images. We had a lot of conversations about the kind of pedestrian pass-throughs that you have in the area. People really like the idea of continuing to build upon those, maybe even putting some canopy things out there, some additional lighting, some artwork, some seating. I know you're working with some particular businesses that do outdoor dining in some of those areas. That was completely supported by the Steering Committee. So those kind of elements continue to enhance what you've already got, I guess, would be the summary of that. Next. Yeah, and this was just more discussion on pedestrian ways, and providing some additional pictures of images that might be good things, good food for thought for future improvements in some of these areas. Next. So that is a quick summary of where we are today. As Brad mentioned, we have been working very closely with the Steering Committee, and they did unanimously support the first forty pages of the document. So it is before you tonight for your consideration, and we'd be happy to answer any comments or questions that you might have.
All right, I will open it up to the Commission first. Is there any comments, questions?
My only comment would be that this seems like a lot of effort was put forth to come up with a finished product and engaging the community the way they did on the Steering Committee. It seems to be a way to kind of ensure that different voices were represented in the product that was completed. So I commend you on the work, the report was very well done. Love the pictures for most of us, that, I mean, there's no better way to understand than to show us something that is appropriate and something's not appropriate. I mean, there's no better way to understand than to show us something that, uh, is appropriate and something's not appropriate. So. I think it's a excellent report.
Anything else in the commission?
I'd just like to piggyback on that. It, uh, it was a pleasure to serve thus far on that. Uh, committee. Um, I think TSCA did a fantastic job in leading everyone through the process and, uh. I'm sure, uh, the next two phases, uh, that we'll be going through will be, uh, equally beneficial when completed. So, uh, my hats off to, uh, Mike and Aaron at TSCA for their work. As well as all the rest of the committee members and those that attended, uh, that weren't committee members, because we did have a lot of. Uh, folks that would come and speak and share their thoughts and it was all very, uh, productive. So. Again, it was, uh, a good experience.
Thank you. All right, I will open it up to the audience to speak. Um, I would just ask that you come to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Um, we will be entertaining comments on the design guidelines specifically. So it would address new construction, renovations or additions in the mixed use district in Valley Junction. Um, so if I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item, I would just have you come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Yeah, you can just come up to the front.
Uh, my name is Nick Wogge. I live at one thirty-six Third Street down in West Des Moines, or the hood, as we like to call it. And, uh, I've been to the meetings. I've participated. I've been allowed to participate. At times it's been a little contentious, as Mike said. Um. And with that, we've got goals. Uh, I'd like to ask the committee to send this back to the steering committee. And firm up some of the items in this guideline. I have examples here. Uh, page twenty, item number four, one-story and split-level buildings not for new construction is not recommended. Why not one stories? We're looking for a step feel. One story would be appropriate. Uh, page twenty-three. Uh, item number. Three, buildings should express clear definition between building elevations, uh, corbeled accents. Uh, wait, no. Excuse me, forget that one. Uh, to the end down here on item ten. Rear buildings should allow for trash bins, employee parking and deliveries. Um, are we allowing, are we mandating that the rear of the buildings have employee parking, Mike?
Am I unmuted? Yeah, I'm unmuted. Yes, I'm here and no, we are not mandating that. Um, I mean, you know, most of the time you've got parking. Uh, in the back of, um, the buildings essentially on the other side of the alley in a municipal parking lot, but. But no, we are not mandating employee parking behind building. It may fit in some situations, but it's not required.
So we are going to allow buildings clear to the alley then?
Yes.
Okay, uh, page thirty would be. Uh, the sixth item, uh, vinyl or exterior insulation finishing system is generally not appropriate. Isn't that kind of a yes, no, Mike?
Uh, well, I, you know. I, I think we had this conversation, the steering committee, you were there, Nick, right? And the general thought was really we wanted hardy board or other materials that were more masonry in nature and not vinyl. Um, they are guidelines. Um, so, you know, we, we stated it the way we stated it. If you want to just, and if the committee or the commission or the council wants to say absolutely no vinyl, we can do that. Um, my crystal ball isn't perfect, right? So something may come up fifteen years where a small piece of vinyl makes sense. I don't know. I really don't think so, but it could happen. Uh, so that's why we wrote it like we did.
Uh, it, vinyl's kind of cheap. I mean, I've got it on my house. It's kept me from painting for thirty-five years. Um, but it is a cheap look, uh, and since we're going through these guidelines. Um, I think that ought to be kind of firmed up and more quality materials used. Especially since we're trying to keep a historic look. And then page forty, if property is located adjacent to or opposite residential buildings, this would be the last item. Uh, attractive rear landscaping, screening for ordinance requirements shall be installed to buffer uses and provide attractive sightlines. Since this is a guideline, is this something we have to go through? And I think this is addressed to Clyde. Clyde asked, uh. Does the Valley Junction Historic Business zoning need to be updated then?
That's part of the next phase.
Uh, Nick, Nick, why don't we go ahead and work through the chair on any questions and she'll bring the staff up when we need to.
Okay, so those those are some items. I also think it's just a little open to city interpretation later on down the road. And then my last comment is Scott, I appreciate your time, your effort, your comments that I've heard. Ethics Steering Committee, um, because you voted on these design guidelines already once. Um, I feel you're kind of a. I don't know. Uh, I think you should excuse yourself from voting on this committee, and I know you have.
First of all, I did not vote. I did not attend the meeting when the vote was taken.
I'm sorry. I thought you were there.
No, I wasn't.
All right, then I'll retract that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do I have anyone else that would like to speak to this item? I think maybe, come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Merrick Wells. Um, I have a business at one thirty-eight Fifth Street. I am also the chair of the steering committee. I thank you all for, um, going through the guidelines with us this evening. Um, yes, this has been a process. Um, we have kind of divided it up. Um, so that we could present, um, the final design guidelines for you this evening. Um, it was a unanimous vote by the steering committee. So everyone on the committee that was tasked with, uh, approving these design guidelines did. Um, approved by unanimous vote for these guidelines. So we are presenting these to you in hopes of you approving these guidelines to go forward. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead and come up, give your name and address for the record.
Uh, Mitchell Callahan, eight oh four Fourth Street. So I'm a resident down in Valley Junction and I, and I'm on the, uh, design. Guide or the master plan committee. Um, so. I feel like, I mean, I know I've put well over thirty hours into this over the last month and a half coming off of COVID over Christmas. Um, I think collectively we probably put in over two hundred hours in addition to the hours Mike had up on that. I don't think we can use just a couple of points to invalidate this entire, there's a lot of material in that, and I think that was on purpose. It's. Valley Junction is an eclectic business district. We've brought that word up a couple of times. It's kind of what started a lot of this. And I think it's really, I think Mike and TSCA did a really good job. Creating and offering those those visual representations of like the recommended, not recommended are really good guidelines. There's enough options in there. Um, I think even, you know, kind of the comment on the vinyl, I think even just there's enough if if we're, if. The board and or the commission aren't impressed with designs that come in front in the future, should they be. That's enough there to just say, can you guys please go and try other materials? Like, I don't think we have to get so pedantic that we're trying to. Outlaw outlaw materials, because I think so far we've seen that development down there. Isn't like going to be using too much vinyl. So I don't know. It's just, that's a little too pedantic for me right now. And we put so much work into it. So, um, I I like the, uh, I guess I'm for it. I hope you guys are looking at the whole picture there. Um, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, do I have anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, Catherine Harrington, and I'm at three nine one seven Cody Circle. So appreciate your time tonight, going through all the guidelines, pretty. Detailed, um, a lot of time has been spent on this, as you heard from our. Nice gentleman over here. So I am also proud to serve on the Historic West Des Moines Steering Plan Committee. And, you know, really this was devised to help. Determine how we're going to grow this area. We all listen, we collect ideas, and we ultimately pass this to. Where we are this evening, which then in turn passes it to city council and the mayor. Um, what is concerning to me about this process is some of the anger and resentment directed toward others who have different opinions and desires. Um, you know, in the balance between growth and historic preservation, we're not all going to get what we want. Um, these are growing pains and a lot of other cities go through this. We're, we're one of many, many others that that have this. Same growing pain that they're going through. If you look on the internet, there's so many stories of this. So. You know, democracy requires a basic sense of solidarity and simultaneously remains open to a multitude of ideas. And as we work toward a compromise for this, it's really important that we be civil, respectful. Uh, never forgetting that we're all hoping to arrive at the best outcome for a, a area that we love and we all have a deep passion for, which I think is fantastic. Um, we have had hours and hours and hours. I have a, I now have a pad because we sit there for four and a half hours. I think our last meeting was four and a half hours. So it was really nice that we were fed. There's a lot of variety in the members and the committee, um, from locals, people that have lived there for many, many years, to business people. So I think they've done a great job of having a lot of different voices heard on this. Uh, with nineteen members, thirty-plus hours of discussion, a lot of surveys, workshops. So certainly we've heard from a lot of different voices, which I think is critical. Um, to succeed in the modern economy, Valley Junction must be free, however, to adapt as economic and community conditions change. I am personally worried that widespread historic designations and restrictions will impede the growth and adaptation. And result in our city's past determining its future. Successful cities are those who foster innovation and can adapt to changing economic conditions. I don't want Valley Junction to be a thing in the past, and instead I want this area to be a city of the future. There is a way we can balance all of this. Valley, Valley Junction has really quickly become one of the coolest, hippest places in our region. It's a great workforce attraction mechanism for our residences and our businesses and and visitors. Let's all work productively together to help it grow that way. Really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do I have anyone else from the audience that would like to speak to this item? Or anybody on the phone? All right, I would close, or I guess this is not a public hearing, just kidding. Um, commission, do we have any discussion or a motion tonight?
No discussion, I move to approve. I, I plan to present, and I want to commend the committee for all the work they did on this. This has come a long way in the last two years.
All right, I have a motion from Chris, a second from Kevin. Can we please vote?
Davis?
Yes.
Pat Bill?
Uh, based upon a couple of comments, uh, tonight and some discussion earlier today with the city attorney, I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay, um, Anderson?
Yes.
Asa?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
We have four in, uh, members in favor, one on stating.
Thank you. And this will go to city council Monday, next Friday? Is that true? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, are there any staff reports tonight?
We have done.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no other discussion, then we are adjourned.
Great. Thanks, everybody.